I call this meeting of Sylvania City Council for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanem?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Westfall?
Here.
All seven members of City Council, present as there four does exist. I welcome all of our visitors to our meeting tonight. If you have a question during the course of the meeting or would just like to speak, please raise your hand so I can recognize you if you have a big time. At this time, I invite you to join us for our pledge of allegiance, this meeting led by Mrs. Westfall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are up to agenda item three, which is additions to the agenda. I have no additions or changes for this evening. Mr. Fry?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor? Number of the City Council? Hearing, Mr. Samper?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Shoreier?
Nothing.
Mr. Aller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Or Ms. Bryant?
Nothing, Mr. Dan.
That is their motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And move that seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the agenda is approved for tonight's meeting. Agenda item five before is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on March the fourth. Mr. Fry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to present the meeting minutes from March fourth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting and I move the passage of those minutes as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes as submitted for our March fourth meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved. Agenda item five is the presentation of a proclamation to Anita Schuler for the footwork that she's doing at the American Cancer Society Discovery Shop over on Sylvania. I want to go up front to read this. You may have very well had it in the newspaper that they had the largest sales increase of any of the stores in the United States there. And we decided that that was noteworthy and wanted to bring more attention to it. So here's the proclamation that I'm going to read. The proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas the Sylvania American Cancer Society Discovery Shop has received the Denise Noel Award from the American Cancer Society that recognizes the greatest annual increase in sales of their sixty locations. And whereas store manager Anita Schuler has gone above and beyond to connect with the Sylvania community and has made the Discovery Shop a place where volunteers and customers feel welcome. And whereas Denise Noel founded the first Discovery Shop in San Fernando, California, nineteen sixty-five, and this annual award goes to the top store is named in her honor. And whereas funds raised at the Discovery Shop support the American Cancer Society's mission to improve the lives of people with cancer and their families through advocacy, research, patient support, to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to prevent, treat, and survive cancer. Now therefore, I Craig A. Stahl, Mayor, do hereby proclaim today, Monday, the eighteenth of March, two thousand twenty-four, as the Discovery Shop Day in the city of Sylvania. Yeah, I think we're all set.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Which does move us to agenda item six. And we are pleased and privileged to have Sylvania Municipal Court Judge Michael Bonfiglio in attendance tonight to present his proposal to add a senior probation officer position in the court.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here. Happy New Year. I don't get here very often. I kind of like to have a party.
Some of us feel the same way about Shaw having to show up in court.
Not all of us, though. What I would like, what I'm asking is for a new position at the court. It would be a senior probation officer. The salary is six thousand dollars more than what our current probation officer, Leonard Demansky, is making right now. We, when I started, I think we had six or seven probation officers. We are now down to two. Lenny was employed as our chief probation officer last year. And he was, his salary at that time was eighty-two thousand. And he left to go into, to go to another business downtown, which he ended up not liking. And he wanted to come back. And we told him, you could come back, but you're going to come back as a probation officer. You'll be making what probation officer makes, about sixty thousand, I think. And he agreed to come back and he's worked out great. So we have two. We have two probation officers. We do not intend to fill that chief probation officer position. There will be no chief. We only have two probation officers, but we, we need to make somebody in charge to be there over lunch, to be there when our docket runs late in the afternoon, to coordinate training with interns, with other staff members, to write our PSI reports, which is a special skill that Lenny has, to be the liaison between the court and the probation officer. Pretty much everything that was laid out in that job description. He will not be supervising the other PO, but he will be ma, he will make sure that they're compliant with any practices we have, any procedures. He's in charge of their case management system. So he's like the watchdog. But again, I want to stress that we're not looking to fill the position that he vacated. We're down to two probation officers' caseloads. At one time, I think they were in excess of seven hundred per PO. We're now down to about three hundred and thereabouts for the two of them. So we've been drastically trying to cut our probation department for six or seven years now. It's still a pretty hefty load for two POs, but that's where we're at. And we're trying to be very selective on who we refer to get back on probation. So that's, that's the pitch. That's what we would like to do, is to give him the, the increase in pay and with it a bit more responsibility that comes with it.
So Judge Bonfiglio, question in regards to the, the chief probation officer. Is that currently a budgeted position in your, in the budget for the municipal court?
It is, yes.
So there's the budgeted for the chief and then there's the two existing probation officer positions, or are there more openings there?
The, the openings are separate. That, that position is, is there. It's still in part of the ordinance that we passed. It just hasn't been filled since last year.
Right.
So the budget will be that position and it should be.
Okay. Thank you.
And Judge, you did indicate that you do not have, intend to fill that chief position. So in essence, this is money that is, exists in the budget.
I didn't hear that question.
In essence, this is money that does exist in the budget.
Yeah, this is actually a small sector difference between sixty-six thousand and eighty-two thousand. And that, it's a savings. This movement that the judge is asking to do is a savings to the city.
Anybody else?
Hard to argue with the savings.
Thank you, folks. Nothing else?
Do you have a pro, do you have an ordinance on the table in front of us? I don't know if City Council is prepared to act on this tonight or would like to refer to committee. It's probably in your committee, Mrs. Westfall. Would you like to hold this?
I feel, I feel comfortable to advance it unless there's any concerns with other members of council.
I don't see any hands going up, so ordinance forty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number forty dash two thousand twenty-four and I'll read by title only. Advising the administrative department on the divisional organization of the city and the codified ordinance is thereof by amending Sylvania Codified Ordinance Section one thirty-nine point zero three, definition and adoption of the compensation plan to create a senior probation officer position. I move passage of ordinance number forty dash two thousand twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty, two thousand twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance forty, two thousand twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, council folks.
Thank you.
See you whenever.
We are now up to agenda item seven. This has to do with the Balfour Waterline Improvements and Resurfacing Project that's already underway. Mr. Aller, maybe you just ought to come forward. Looked like you were thinking about sitting there, but you've got a lot of items here, right?
Tried to hide.
This project is already under construction. I've watched the pile of blue water pipe go down along Monroe Street and Alexis. What's this one about?
On a, for, on a couple of properties, the two properties that are listed here in my letter, as we were getting into construction, the contractor was concerned where we were going to have to place this water line, that he was going to get into the root system of a couple trees that are actually behind the right-of-way line on private property. And he was concerned with the damage that he felt that he would do to those root, root systems, that they wouldn't be safe to keep in place after construction. We talked to the two property owners about the situation. We had our parks and forestry put, conduct appraisals on the trees that were going to be taken down. And in order to be able to take those trees down, we do have to have work agreements with those property owners because of the, because of the trees being a private situation. We are recommending fifty-six eighty-two. We have to take a fifty-six inch diameter cottonwood. That tree is valued at three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. And at fifty-seven twenty-six, Balfour Road, we have to take thirty-five inch diameter and forty-one inch diameter silver maple trees. Those two trees are valued at a total of four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. We do have work agreements, tentative work agreements in place with those property owners that have agreed to those appraisals. And we're just asking for council approval of those work agreements and payment amounts here tonight.
Trees are on their private properties, not in the right-of-way.
They're close to the right-of-way apparently. Yeah. Just off of the right-of-way. Yeah, we, we took about, I know we took several trees down in there that were in the right-of-way. But these were not marked because they were private trees. We were hoping to be able to skirt through there and not do much damage, but that's just not.
The lines go deep. You have to cut them. Trees fall.
Yep. Yeah, if we, if we cut out the, the root systems on these trees and then we get a high wind and, you know, and those trees come crashing down, it's, you know, it, that's just not, that's not a safety risk worth taking in our mind.
Questions for Mr. Aller? We have two separate ordinances to purchase these trees. They're both in your committee, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only, ordinance number forty-one dash two thousand twenty-four, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into the work agreement for tree removal with Randy S. Hall, relative to the Balfour Road Waterline Improvements and Resurfacing Project, appropriating funds, funds therefore. I move for passage of ordinance number forty-one dash two thousand twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
We moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-one, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance forty-one, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. Now on to the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only, ordinance number forty-two dash two thousand twenty-four, authorizing the mayor and director of finance with, to enter into work agreement for tree removal with Stephanie M. Vine, relative to the Balfour Road Waterline Improvements and Resurfacing Project, appropriating funds therefore. I move passage of ordinance number forty-two dash two thousand twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-two, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance forty-two, two thousand twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. We're now up to agenda item eight. And agenda items eight, nine, and ten are all for the same project, are all part of the same package. We just have to have a separate ordinance for each one. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the next three items are associated with the traffic signal improvements project that we have moving forward. The design is at about ninety-five percent completion and we're just trying to get the right-of-way locked up that season for that project. We need some additional room at some of those signals. This first project is with, or excuse me, this first approval is for right-of-way acquisition from Hall, Hall Family Ventures. This is the parcel, it's an open parcel on the west side of the drive entrance to the Major Magics. So it's that open, open land area there just to the left.
Where the oil change place used to be?
Where the oil change used to play. Yep. We've come to an agreement with that property owner in the amount of two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. This mount wasn't, or this, these payments were anticipated in the budget and they're part of our capital improvement account and will be paid from the form of our capital improvement account.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number forty-three, two thousand and twenty-four and I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a purchase agreement with Hall Family Ventures LLC for the Monroe Street Traffic Signal Improvements Project, dedicating the same for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-three, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance forty-three, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. Next.
The next item is with Country Square Condominiums. This is just a temporary easement. It's not a permanent right-of-way take, but just additional working room during construction. We've come to an agreement with that property owner in the amount of two thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and we ask for council approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and twenty-four by title only. Accepting a temporary construction easement from Country Square Condominium for Monroe Street Traffic Signal Improvements Project, dedicating the temporary easement for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of two thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance forty-four, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. And now the third one, Mr. Aller?
The last one for this evening is a combination of right-of-way acquisition and temporary easement. We need some additional room on a permanent basis with the new signal, but also some additional room during construction. This agreement is with Boris Enterprises. This is basically the property with the house of the UBS business on Monroe Street. We've come to agreement with that property owner in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars and we ask the council approval.
This is ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and twenty-four by title only. Accepting a temporary construction easement from Boris Enterprises LLC authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a purchase agreement with Boris Enterprises LLC for the Monroe Street Traffic Signal Improvements Project, dedicating the same for public purposes, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance forty-five, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Any update on the schedule for that, those improvements, Mr. Aller?
We're in the right-of-way acquisition phase and we would anticipate going to be a lot of part of two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Fry? Question to Mr. Aller.
Mr. Aller, could you give us kind of a map? I mean, I, this is a pretty good distance, multiple traffic lights. I know it's a traffic light improvement project, that's great, but we're going to have, at least I expect that I'm going to have questions from members of the community. If you could like send us a map or something, I may have seen it, but I don't know that I've seen one recently on what the plan is for this. So if you could just send that out to members of council.
Some of these traffic lights are decades old. Okay. We're now onto the second page of our agenda for this evening, agenda item number eleven. And this is the improvements at Plumber Pool, also which we discussed last meeting. Update in the letter from Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're, with the approval of the joint cooperation agreement at the last council meeting, we're ready to get moving with the first phase of this project, which is the improvements in the filtration pump room. We have a proposal from Coil Mechanical in the amount of seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Per the joint cooperation agreement, Sage Yard will be contributing ten thousand dollars towards this portion of the project and then the city is responsible for the remaining sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. It is Sage Yard's intent to do these improvements now and have them in and complete by the start of the pool season this year. So we ask for approval to move forward utilizing the capital improvement fund, four oh one, seventy-three ten, five three four oh five.
Coreyl has committed to this schedule as well?
Yes.
Any spare time there? I know how old funding's involved. Hittings break, lines crack.
We, we've expressed our concerns on the, on the tight construction schedule. Coil assures, assures us that they will have it done and have the pool in operation a week ahead of, at least a week ahead of the pool opening season and.
County Health Department will probably want to visit during that week. Okay. Very good.
Do you have any contractual provisions with Coil regarding the timing?
It's in the, yes, yes. It's in the full proposal information.
Yeah, I didn't see it. Where is that? So they're committed to completing it on time and if not, that's at their peril.
That's correct.
All right. Thanks for that update. Mrs. Westfall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number forty-six dash two thousand twenty-four. I'll read by title only. Accepting the proposal of Coil Mechanical Inc. for the plumber pool pump room improvement project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars. I move passage of ordinance number forty-six dash two thousand twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-six, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance forty-six, two thousand and twenty-four is enacted as an emergency measure. And you'll be back to us, or Joe will be back to us with pool house improvements for after the summer season.
That's correct.
Thank you. We are now up to agenda item twelve. And items twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are for purchases of three vehicles for the streets department. We'll start with a new street sweeper. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in the streets department, we're requesting approval to purchase a new street sweeper from M-Tech Company. They provided a quote of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars for the unit that we're, that we would like to purchase. If approved, that, this new street sweeper will replace our existing two thousand seven Sterling Street Sweeper. As you can imagine, sixteen years, street sweeping with the sand and grit and everything that you're picking up with those street sweepers. Seen better days, so. Once we get the new piece of equipment, we will be back to council asking to list that piece on gov deals. This purchase was included in the two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan and will be paid via that account and we ask for approval.
We had a naming competition amongst the schoolchildren sixteen years ago when we bought that. Prior to that, we did not have an effective street sweeper at all.
Mr. Aller, the, um, we've had challenges, shall we say, in getting, uh, some types of equipment delivered. What's the ETA on replacing Sudzilla?
Uh, they've actually indicated that they will have this to us, uh, prior to the fall season.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. Um, we, yeah, we just took ownership of a bucket truck, um, about a month ago that we actually purchased in, uh, or issued the PO for in two thousand twenty-two. That was a two-year, uh, vehicle. Um, but, yeah, they, they're indicating that we'll have it, uh, yet this fall.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we do have ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four for this purchase. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of M-Tech Company for the provision of one new street sweeper for the Division of Streets, Department of Public Service, appropriating three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars therefore, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries an ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as enacted as a emergency measure.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, Kevin, how do we pay this? We pay this upfront? Do we pay when we get it? The installments?
I'm sorry. Uh, we pay when we get it. Yeah, we issue a PO, uh, under the, you know...
So we're appropriating the funds, but the money, we're not gonna pay. That's what I thought, but... That's a big number.
For it, yeah, you, you, it's hard to imagine that a street sweeper, uh, costs that much, yeah. Yeah.
It is a lot less than if we were in the fire department business. Their vehicles take years and they cost millions.
Yeah.
So, I'm all right with this. Okay, the next two items are for new dump trucks for the Street Department. These are the trucks that carry stone and soil, but also snowplows and salt. That's what these are for. One is a dual axle unit, the other one is a single axle unit. Um, there are two ordinances for each of these two trucks. You buy the truck chassis and cab, and then you buy the equipment for it that comes along with it. Um, Mr. Aller for the tandem axle dump truck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have obtained, uh, quotes for a tandem axle dump truck and dump body. Um, we received quotes, uh, the, uh, lowest and best, uh, quotes, uh, we receive from Whiteford Kenworth, um, for the, uh, truck chassis itself, and then, uh, Kallida Truck Equipment for the dump body, uh, on the, on the rear. Uh, the cabin chassis is in the amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and the dump body, uh, from Kallida Truck is in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I do want to note that if you look at the quote from, uh, Kallida Truck, um, we are utilizing, uh, the option, the pre-wet system, uh, that's, uh, added on to, uh, the cost of that truck. Um, the way the new dump bodies are, um, because of the, the way the, the brine systems work, um, the new truck beds, uh, have an angle, uh, to the bottom of the beds. Our existing, um, brine equipment, um, won't fit into, uh, that type of unit very well. Um, and ultimately, as we, as we replace all of our trucks, we're, we're gonna be in that situation anyways where we're gonna have to update that equipment. Um, so we felt that we would just go ahead and replace it out, um, rather than, uh, have to replace everything, um, all at once down the road. So we're doing those as we move along. Um, but, uh, we do ask for, uh, approval, uh, to move forward. Uh, this purchase was included in the two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan and, uh, will be paid from that account.
Okay, there are four ordinance coming up, and I'm going to the other members of the Streets Department to read the first three of these, starting with Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Forty-eight. I'd like to introduce by title only, ordinance number forty-eight dash twenty-twenty-four, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of Whiteford Kenworth for the provision of the new twenty-twenty-five Kenworth T four eighty cab chassis tandem axle for the Division of Streets Department's Public Service, appropriating a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars therefore, uh, move for passage of ordinance number forty-eight dash twenty-twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries an ordinance forty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four as enacted as an emergency measure. Now for the dump body, ordinance forty-nine. Mrs. Westphal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number forty-nine dash two thousand twenty-four and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of Kallida Truck Equipment, Inc., for the provision of one new tandem axle dump truck body for the Division of Streets, Department of Public Service, appropriating a hundred and ninety-five thou- a hundred and ninety-five, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Therefore, I move passage of ordinance number forty-nine, two thousand twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number forty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries an ordinance forty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four as enacted as an emergency measure. Now on to Agenda Item Fourteen, the single axle dump truck. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the single axle, the lowest and best bids were submitted by the same, uh, company that, uh, we just, uh, discussed with the tandem axle. Um, Whiteford Kenworth, uh, submitted a, uh, bid of, uh, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars for the, uh, cabin chassis, and, uh, Kallida Truck Equipment submitted a proposal, uh, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, fifty dollars for the dump body. Um, this vehicle, I don't think I addressed the tandem, but this vehicle will be, ultimately will be replacing a two thousand seven International, uh, single axle dump truck. Um, the funds were included in the two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan, and, uh, will be paid from that fund, and we ask for permission to, uh, move forward with the purchase.
We have your council packets, ordinance fifty and fifty-one for this purchase, starting with ordinance fifty, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Hanum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of ordinance number fifty dash two thousand twenty-four, uh, and I, well, I move adoption, that, by reading by title only, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of Whiteford Kenworth for the provision of a new twenty-twenty-five Kenworth T four eighty cab chassis for the Division of Streets, Department of Public Service, appropriating a hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars therefore, and, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of ordinance number fifty dash twenty-twenty-four as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number fifty, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries an ordinance fifty, two thousand and twenty-four as enacted as an emergency measure. Now on to ordinance fifty-one, the purchase of the dump truck body. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number fifty-one dash two thousand and twenty-four by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of Kallida Truck Equipment, Inc., for the provision of one new dump truck body for the Division of Streets Department of Public Service, appropriating one hundred and sixty-three thousand, fifty dollars therefore, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. This has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries an ordinance fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-four as enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you, Mr. Aller.
Thank you.
All right. We are clear up for Agenda Item Fifteen. This is a banner application put in by the Savannah Schools to congratulate their two thousand and twenty-four graduates. See, you can see a picture of it, a similar installation that was put up last year. Um, this one is still based on the old fee structure. Um, this one, city council, as I described before, needs to give specific approval for it, so, Mr. Hanum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have an ordinance fifty-two.
Yeah, excuse me. Application. Got it. Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of ordinance number fifty-two dash twenty-twenty-four, I'll read by title only. Approving the banner application of Savannah Schools, authorizing the zoning administrator to indicate such approval on behalf of the city of Savannah, and I move adoption of ordinance number fifty-two, twenty-two forty-four as an emergency measure.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The ordinance is approved, and the banner application is approved as well. All right. The next two items are for referral to the Planning Commission. They're zoning change applications, and, um, the Plan Commission meets next on April the tenth, Wednesday, April the tenth, to review these. Both would then come back with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and a public hearing date would then be set by city council about forty-five days following that. So with that, the first one is from Highland Meadows.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse on the first item.
We need a motion to allow Mr. McCann... And to push back from the table?
So moved.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. So let the record show that Mr. McCann is not at the table for this item due to the fact that he's a member of the golf club. Um, I have taken a look at these. Um, this is for an addition on their existing maintenance building in the center of the course, not really visible from the edges at all. It's very well screened by trees, and matches into their existing storage facility, but because it's a special use permit, it does need to have a modification of the existing special use permit. Um, there will be many letters sent out. There's a lot of neighbors to this property. You're one of them? I don't think you need to push back from the table, but I doubt that you can see it from your house now. All right, so all we need tonight is a motion to refer this to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. Mr. Hanum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move, uh, that we refer, uh, SUP application number one dash two thousand twenty-four to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to refer special use permit one, two thousand and twenty-four to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Agenda Item Seventeen is also a special use permit, a zoning issue to refer to the Planning Commission. Let the record show that Mr. McCann has rejoined us at the table. Um, this one, if you opened it up, is for a sheets gasoline and food service facility on Monroe Street, right across from, um, Olivet Lutheran Church, next to the Savannah Country Club condominium tower, and it would replace what was, which has been a problematic office building. And over the years, it's had a lot of different things in it. It was originally built as an IBM office building years ago. Um, this one could have a lot of mailings go out as well, if it has to go out to each of the owners in the condominium association, which I assume it does, and I think will attract a lot of attention at a public hearing coming up, either from the housing owners, from the general public, or from Olivet Lutheran members across the street. But this one right now, all we're doing tonight is referring to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. Mr. Hanum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna refer this to the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission to be, uh, diligent in their inquiry about these structures. I've been to, I, I must admit that when I saw that this was a sheets in that location, um, it caused me pause. I will be pausing, I will be, I think I will, I'm skeptical about that land use in this location.
I believe it will be questioned by...
And, uh, so you can pass that on to the Planning Commission for me?
I did on my way to Columbus again, a weekend or so ago, and Lindsay was in the car with me. We took a look at some sheets on the, on US twenty-three going into Columbus. They are nicely constructed places. It's not that, it's that it's a gas station going back where an office building was. And we have a, an abandoned gas station on the west side of US twenty-three right now.
Right.
Okay.
I really, uh, there are a number of other uses I would rather see for that property, but, um...
Takes a special use permit approval by city council.
Right, a special use permit, which we are not required to issue, um, and, uh, which we will be, I'm sure...
Diligent in analyzing it and appropriating this from this location.
Having said more than I probably should...
Possibly.
I will move, uh, that we refer SUP application number two, that's twenty-twenty-four, to the Planning Commission for their careful review and recommendation.
Second. Been moved and seconded to review special use permit two, two thousand and twenty-four to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Agenda Item Seventeen is also a special use permit, a zoning issue to refer to the Planning Commission. Let the record show that Mr. McCann has rejoined us at the table. Um, this one, if you opened it up, is for a sheets gasoline and food service facility on Monroe Street, right across from, um, Olivet Lutheran Church, next to the Savannah Country Club condominium tower, and it would replace what was, which has been a problematic office building. And over the years, it's had a lot of different things in it. It was originally built as an IBM office building years ago. Um, this one could have a lot of mailings go out as well, if it has to go out to each of the owners in the condominium association, which I assume it does, and I think will attract a lot of attention at a public hearing coming up, either from the housing owners, from the general public, or from Olivet Lutheran members across the street. But this one right now, all we're doing tonight is referring to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. Mr. Hanum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna refer this to the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission to be, uh, diligent in their inquiry about these structures. I've been to, I, I must admit that when I saw that this was a sheets in that location, um, it caused me pause. I will be pausing, I will be, I think I will, I'm skeptical about that land use in this location.
I believe it will be questioned by...
And, uh, so you can pass that on to the Planning Commission for me?
I did on my way to Columbus again, a weekend or so ago, and Lindsay was in the car with me. We took a look at some sheets on the, on US twenty-three going into Columbus. They are nicely constructed places. It's not that, it's that it's a gas station going back where an office building was. And we have a, an abandoned gas station on the west side of US twenty-three right now.
Right.
Okay.
I really, uh, there are a number of other uses I would rather see for that property, but, um...
Takes a special use permit approval by city council.
Right, a special use permit, which we are not required to issue, um, and, uh, which we will be, I'm sure...
Diligent in analyzing it and appropriating this from this location.
Having said more than I probably should...
Possibly.
I will move, uh, that we refer SUP application number two, that's twenty-twenty-four, to the Planning Commission for their careful review and recommendation.
Second. Been moved and seconded to review special use permit two, two thousand and twenty-four to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The ordinance forty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.